We're at 6:30 and I'm just waiting for a second for Taylor to show up. Let me make sure he's not in the waiting room. I don't see him in the waiting room yet. Let's give it one minute.
Hey Bob.
Yes, sir.
He may be joining us late. He was working in fire today and was leaving early to get back home to be at the meeting, so he may be a few minutes late.
Okay, well, we've got some homework items to do. We'll do those first and then I'll, if I have to slip the presentation by Lyman Morse for a few minutes, I can do that and move things around a little bit, if that's okay with you all. But in the meantime, I think it's, I think we're on, we're live and we'll start our meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Select Board Camden Select Board Meeting for March 9th, 2021. And as always, remind everyone that our, we are on the webinar format on Zoom and you can find the link on the town's website under Select Board Meeting. There are many options to join via Zoom as an attendee or by phone and there are instructions on the agenda regarding how the phone can work for you, if that's a preferred approach. And with that, we will commence our agenda and start with any public input on non-agenda items. And I don't believe we have anyone this evening, so I will move on to the second item, which is the approval of the board minutes for February 23rd, 2021. Any comments on those minutes?
I, I do have a comment on the minutes at, toward at the end, it said there was a reference to me saying that I will check on the efficiency of the solar farm in Sagamore Farm. I have no reaction of, no recollection of saying that whatsoever.
It was me who said that, Mark.
Uh, that's, thank you, because I said, I did not say that.
Well, at least you remember. That's a good thing.
Yeah, well, I remember what I don't.
Are there any other corrections to the minutes? Motion?
I motion that we accept the minutes with the reverse of, of quotes attributed.
That's fine.
On 23rd.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, discussion, so we'll call vote. Allison? She said, Allison, she waved at him, yes. Taylor?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And Bob. Now that we have Taylor here, thank you, Taylor, for going through his busy day to get to us. We appreciate it.
Oh, I wouldn't miss it for the world, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is a presentation and a discussion with Lyman Morse on the update on some of the conceptual ideas they have for upcoming projects. I believe, Allison, if you bring on Drew first, he can tell us who else he wants on, and Josh too, of course. I think he had four people I think he was looking to bring on. He can tell us who those are.
Um, yes, some of them I can figure out myself here, I think, but um.
Okay, okay. This is Josh. Hi, Drew.
Hey guys, hey everybody.
John Moore, is that Josh? Is Josh's real name John?
Josh Moore, who else?
Oh, you already got Josh, okay. Somebody else got him.
Is there anybody else you wanted to bring on? I, I think there was another person. Drew, did you have anybody else?
Um, no, this is fine. Josh is gonna do the presentations.
Okay, cool. You heard my intro. Drew, let you lead off in this discussion update, if you would, please.
Yeah, I mean, that's it. You guys, thanks for taking the time. How was everybody?
Good.
Seen anybody in a long time, but, uh, well, actually, some of you on the road, but, um, anyway, I hope everybody's doing well. Thanks for the time. This is kind of our introductory to our upcoming projects. I want to kind of get in front of you guys to see what we're up to and some, some of the future plans. A lot of the discussion is a lot around how to tie in the projects with the town, you know, the public access pieces, things like that. So it kind of lays the groundwork of what we're thinking and, um, and potentially how we could go forward. But, uh, yeah, that's kind of it. And thanks for the time, you guys. And Josh has got a nice presentation he put together for you guys and, yeah, look forward to hearing any questions. So, thank you.
All right, Josh, share your screen.
Alrighty, thank you. Here we go. See if I can, my kids can do Zoom better than I can, so let's just.
Yeah, that's the story of life these days.
Yeah, this works here. All right, can everybody see that?
Uh, yes.
Excellent, awesome. All right, well, thank you, guys, as Drew said, for giving us some time tonight. As everybody knows, I'm Josh Moore, Special Projects at Lyman Morse and a proud Camden resident for a fairly long time, I guess. Not a native, but close to it, I guess. Um, there's a lot going on in the harbor these days and together, I think we've come up with a plan that, to me at least, looks like a win-win-win as it addresses the harbor's short and long-term needs, supports working waterfront businesses like Lyman Morse and property owners as well throughout the entire harbor, and benefits ultimately, as it should, all Camden residents. Um, we're, we're here tonight, though, in, in front of you tonight, in specific, because climate change is quite literally forcing our hands as both the town and as private property owners on the harbor. We're having to raise structures up out of the rising water collectively, and I think conservatively, we're looking at more than $30 million in upgrades in Camden Harbor. The existing fund, uh, funding mechanisms that we have in place, so town budgets, private funding, and then existing TIF revenues haven't been able to make those upgrades happen. Um, as you'll see in the slides that I put together for tonight, a collaborative approach, I think, can solve all these problems. We have a unique opportunity right now to leverage an existing grant and some potential private investment to help everyone reach their goals. But to do that, we need you to act tonight by starting the reviews necessary to get this plan to voters this summer. Um, the municipal projects will come as no surprise to you guys in particular, since we've all been talking about these projects for a long time. Harbor Park and the Public Landing are certainly the most pressing with climate change demanding action in those two spots. But things like the breakwaters in the Outer Harbor, replacing the steamboat landing ramp in the parking area there, and complete, completing the municipal goal of a harbor walk from downtown to Eaton Point, those are no less urgent. Again, I may be being conservative, but adding up the estimates that I could find gave me a municipal need of more than $10 million. But of course, the town isn't the only one who's facing the need for some pretty serious upgrades. The fire last summer moved Lyman Morse's need to renovate our inner harbor boatyard to the front of the list for us. But we also have an immediate need to improve our facilities over in the bean yard, replace the red shed building at the head of the harbor, and other improvements on our property. Um, we're looking at more than $20 million in investments that we need to make if we're to remain competitive on Camden Harbor. But like I said, this is a proposal for a collaboration, and there are two projects in particular that are well-suited to a public-private partnership. The Steamboat Landing Pier and Dock is one that you've heard about already through the deauthorization legislation and your support of the boating infrastructure grant. Uh, in addition to that, though, we're also proposing to build a new public harbor walk extending from the Inner Harbor all the way to the Outer Harbor past Steamboat Landing. Both of these projects are perfectly suited to this kind of collaborative approach. In terms of specifics, the Pier and Dock project would have Lyman Morse building and operating the new facility, but the town ultimately owning it. This allows us to leverage the resources of both sides, including that $1.5 million grant that we won for the project, as well as the deauthorization that the town was able to complete through an act of Congress late last year. This project is still several years out before construction can actually begin, but the terms of the grant require any agreements like this one to be executed by September of this year, and that's why we're here tonight. Even more immediate is our need for a public harbor walk extension, one that would build on the pathways that the town already has in places like Harbor Park and elsewhere in town. This harbor walk would accomplish the comp plan's goal of a pedestrian route from Camden Yacht Club to Eaton Avenue. It would include an elevated walkway in front of the bean yard near Steamboat Landing. For most people in Camden, that new, new section would provide them with the first opportunity to actually sit and take in Camden's harbor and Penobscot baby dock. If you guys have never sat there, it is a pretty phenomenal spot. Can't say that enough. Um, in addition, we're looking at expanding the public harbor walk through Lyman Morse's inner harbor boatyard with new walking surfaces, lighting, and educational signs. Um, Drew and Lyman Morse surprised a lot of people six years ago by actually inviting people over to the east side of the harbor, and this harbor walk extension takes that to a whole new level. Um, in terms of whether or not we really need to build all of this, the answer is a resounding yes. The yachting market is growing and Camden's fortunate to what has been termed the transient boating circuit in Maine. But other harbors on the circuit like Belfast and Rockland, they're making investments in their harbor infrastructure, and if we want to stay on the circuit, we have to as well. The harbor master will tell you, and Lyman Morse's dock masters actually can confirm this as well, that Camden docks are full more often than they're not during the summertime. The Inner Harbor is too tight and too shallow for larger vessels, especially sailboats being built these days, and Steamboat Landing area is perfect for them. Building this project will help all users of Camden Harbor. Um, I think it's important that everyone knows that growing the marine industry in Camden does more than support Lyman Morse. Studies show that a huge percentage of the money that's spent by boaters is not spent at the marina, or rather at the grocery stores, the bars, restaurants, and other businesses in town. My office before the fire used to overlook the docks and before, and I can tell you that the carts that came to those boats were full of bags from French and Brown, Allen Turtle, and all the other great businesses in town. But there's no denying that these projects would support working waterfront in Camden. Lyman Morse anticipates hiring up to 35 new employees as our business grows through these projects. And looking at our tenants, just in the Inner Harbor project alone, we expect them to hire even more than that. That's a lot of new jobs coming into Camden Harbor. But the benefits are more than just economic. In addition to those new jobs, you're improving public access to the harbor, increasing revenue to the town through new operating agreements with each property owner, relieving congestion in the Inner Harbor where some of the larger vessels are. Finally, and this should probably be at the top of the list, really, this project answers the challenges that climate change and sea level rise are giving to us. Whether it's through the new protection that the dock system will give to the Steamboat Landing ramp, which has been getting hammered recently as storms become more frequent and more violent, Steve will tell us about that, or the shelter that the Outer Harbor breakwaters would provide for the entire harbor and everybody in it. Each piece of this proposal does address climate change. So, how to pay for it all? Um, the good news is the existing TIF district can be revised to include everything you've seen tonight. Even more importantly, this plan would establish a framework for incentivizing other harborfront property owners, showing them a way to identify public benefits that then they can offer and enter into agreements of their own with the town. This is a pro, proposal that starts with Lyman Morse and lays out the 50-50 new tax revenue split for future projects, but it's by no means the end. This should be a living program, something that grows as new pilot, public-private partnerships are identified. Now, back to specifics, and I'm sorry, I can't help being a bit of a history nerd, so I had to share these photos that I found at the Camden Public Landing of, of the area. I, I did also want to make sure that you knew that we're not reventing the wheel with this pier and harbor walk. As recently as the 1950s, the Steamboat Landing Pier stuck out into the harbor in almost the exact location of where we're proposing a dock system. We'd be building a modern facility, one that would attract new visitors to Camden, but we would not be doing it in uncharted waters. So finally, in terms of the path forward, it's becoming clear. There's a lot of permitting that still needs to happen at the local, state, and federal level, but to make it all happen, we do need to get started right away. Um, as Drew mentioned, we're asking you guys to take that next step, I believe it's authorizing town staff and the committees to begin the reviews that are necessary to get this plan in front of bo, voters this summer, so that the process that we started together, including that federal grant that we need to obligate by September, can keep moving forward. Thank you, guys, and I think we're happy to take some questions and I can stop sharing.
Thank you, Josh. That was a very succinct presentation. I appreciate that very much. Any questions? Allison, go ahead.
Um, so this is really exciting to me because anytime a huge amount of money gets invested in the harbor, it's a, it's a really big opportunity to use that for matching funds or, um, you know, also as an opportunity for habitat enhancements and education. And I look at most of this from an environmental perspective, and I know you guys do too, um, in, in large part. Um, so I have, you know, 50 million things that I, I would want to ask about right now, but to keep it with some of the basics, did you show anything that shows the, um, sort of the totality of the new dock space being proposed? I understand that Steamboat, Steamboat Landing or Steamboat Wharf was there, but that, I mean, that didn't extend out anywhere close to what's being.
It was Victoria Lynn's presentation, and you saw that, I presume.
Is it, and, and just in terms of the amount of the channel that is going to be blocked or not blocked or, um, you know, how do we help people understand? I think a lot of people will be supportive of many aspects of this, but, um, it's a pretty big change for the Outer Harbor. I think a lot of people already feel like, you know, maybe there are, do we need more boats in Camden? One of the things with this boating infrastructure grant is that it has to benefit transient vessels over 25 feet. And, you know, we, different people in Camden feel, you know, differently about the importance of recruiting these large vessels to town. I certainly recognize that immense economic development and job creation opportunities that it has. Just in my, my family, my husband makes a living off of taking care of these boats year-round, and it brings lots of jobs. Um, so I, I'm not doubting any of, of that, but just, um, how do you decide how many boats is too many for Camden? Um, how much more stuff do we want in the harbor? So, you know, sort of what are your thoughts on that?
Um, I can, I'll, I'll take the first part if you want, um, which is just the physical sort of layout, which is, you know, a preliminary layout. I want to be clear about that. That is what we have come up with and, and are moving forward with. In terms of how it relates to Steamboat Landing and a pier that was there, that came off of Steamboat Landing Road almost, almost directly. It stuck out, I should have the number, but I, I want to say about 400 feet or so.
Yeah.
Um, and then our, our pier, this new pier, comes off of what is currently, uh, Lyman Morse's properties and, and would essentially wrap around that. It would go out to the two channel. We've been very, very careful to, uh, not only not go into the channel, but actually to, to give enough of a setback so that we're nowhere, we're not any, anywhere in danger of impeding the channel. So does that explain that, Allison, and sort of?
Yeah, I mean, to me, my, the first thing that I thought when I looked at it was, how am I gonna take my kid and my kayak and my paddleboard over to the, over to Sherman's Cove? For example, and already feeling a lot of the time like, you know, power boats on vacation, um, coming into the harbor is, isn't, it doesn't always feel safe to me. I think a large, a lot of what we want to be encouraging is the ability for, you know, like kayakers and less powerful vessels, you know, to feel safe. I hear a lot of comments from people that, you know, would like kayak storage and things like that. Um, you know, are there ways that we can increase the number of, of boats that can come and enjoy Camden without, um, you know, making it even less safe for, you know, these smaller boats? And we, we see, I think, a pretty big increase in just the number of like even paddleboarders that are out trying to enjoy the water. And I want to try to encourage that as much as possible, also encourage things like what you guys are talking about, which is getting people down to the harbor, um, you know, increasing public access, but.
Well, maybe, Drew, maybe could you address, Allison's hitting on a point here in terms of, of, you know, public relations, basically, you know, getting, getting information to the public, including some of the development of what we're relating to here. Do you have any comments on, in your philosophy and approach to is, as this, this is the concept at the moment, has a lot of design details you have to develop, which the public's going to be very interested in. Can you address that, please?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Allison, you're, you're speaking to, you know, talking to the choir right now. I think, um, you know, you and I met and talked about this, you know, the access for kayakers and things like that, because I do the same thing with my kids, right? What, we want to be able to go along the coast there and not get, you know, hit by a powerboat or something like that. But no, I, I think in the end, this might actually help that, you know, you'll be able to go under the pier itself, um, that comes out far enough, and then we'll have a ramp system that'll allow people to go under. You know, a big part of this too is can we, can we add the kids event stuff to that? Can we help, you know, increase the kids' activities on the docks, you know? I, I know we've got a great sailing program in KESIP. Can we support that? This is kind of my mentality a little bit on this thing. In turn, you know, I think, you know, our goal is, is pretty in line, why, I think it is. I mean, we do, as I said in a previous meeting, you know, our goal is to kind of increase the activity around what we're doing, create an energy and a vibe that's supportive of the town, but, you know, supportive of us and supportive of, you know, bringing more people that enjoy the area, because this is the premier harbor on the coast. I mean, if, if you're gonna come to Maine, you stop in Camden, there's a need for this. And, you know, anyway, so long story short, I, I think, um, a lot of these details will flesh out with you guys, you know, going forward. I think this is kind of that introductory kind of segment, and there's a, there's a lot to this for sure that we gotta go through.
Yeah. Allison, one second. I'm gonna look at board members have a chance to, if they want to say anything. I'll come back to you in a second, please. Mark, go ahead.
I'm curious about, Joshua mentioned that our, our harbors, uh, north and south of us are doing improvements as well to try and attract this business. I'm sort of curious, um, you know, I think obviously we need to keep up with the Joneses, as they say. But I'm curious, you know, and interested that we don't fall behind and, and lose that. Um, you know, I'd rather have individual boats coming to town than I would, I think, having, uh, the big tour, the big, uh, big huge tourist boats coming, because those seem to really overload the town a little bit. So I'm sort of curious about the development, what the other towns are doing. Can you speak about that a little bit?
Yeah, yes, and do you want to take that, Drew, or?
No, go ahead, Josh, yeah.
You know, I mean, so, well, in, in north to south, I guess, um, in, in Belfast Front Street, what they've done there is pretty well-known. Um, and they are, you know, indeed going after the recreational boater, though, uh, more of a, a larger vessel than, than even this is proposing, I think. Um, and, and they put in a lot of infrastructure. I can tell you that, you know, growing up, when I was in, you know, my teens or whatever, Belfast was not on the sort of cruising circuit at all. Uh, so they've come a long way, and there's no doubt, and it's, it's great to see for everybody, because it's drawing a lot of people to Maine. Rockland, so skipping over Camden for a second, um, Rockland has, you know, some pretty significant proposals, uh, not, that are not just on the table, but are, are being developed, including one for, um, the area in front of, uh, Archers and, and all of that, um, as well as the Landings Marina on the other side. So there are some pretty big proposals that are aimed at attracting recreational vessels, because people have recognized, A, the, how much that brings to the community, but also to their, to their facilities as well. I don't want to, I don't want to act like Camden, uh, when I said Camden needs to do a certain amount of infrastructure upgrades, I, I strongly believe that. Um, I also, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna come right out and say it. I have a little bit of snobbery. Camden is the greatest harbor in the country, if not the world. I'm just gonna say it. So, um, you know, we, we always have that going for us, but if, if we rest on that, you know, um, I have a lot of relatives in the industry, and they have told me specifically, when I say, can't we do this event in Camden? Can't we, can't we bring this Camden? They say, I'm sorry, Josh, you just don't have the infrastructure. You just don't have it. It's such a great little harbor, and, but you just don't have it there yet. And I'm like, okay.
Thanks, Josh. Jenna, you had your hand up three times.
Sorry about that. I was sort of, um, didn't want to lose my internet connection. Um, I, I know that this is preliminary, and a lot of us have a ton of questions to ask, but what I want to ask Josh and Drew is very briefly to summarize what you would like coming out of tonight and what you see as kind of your ideal progression of this, just very briefly, so that I know that we're not supposed to get into a big discussion tonight. I really don't know that we have time, even if we want to. So, um, just to hear that from you would be great.
That's a great, great question, Jenna. Yeah, Josh, you, yeah, I think you, you can kind of lay that out, right?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we need to get started, and we wanted to bring this to you guys first, um, to make sure that it starts, the process starts with you. Um, and so we know, our, let me say, I, I believe that I know some of the processes that need to happen. Uh, harbor committee review, planning board review. Um, I believe that perhaps CDAC is going to, you know, might get involved because there's a TIF. Um, so there's, there's so many pieces that what I, what I think we need from you guys is the green light to say, yes, let's move this forward and start those, those reviews. There's, there's a lot of them, and we do have this September deadline that's sort of a little bit, you know, we're bombing up again. Probably it's pretty far out there. But, you know, I, I backed up the calendar and said, we really need to bring this, um, tonight, if we can. That help Jenna? Does that answer your question?
You're muted, Jenna.
Yeah, I just figured that out. Thank you for the moment it did. Yeah, I just, I just, I mean, I get what you're, but coming out of tonight, your hope, dream, and aspiration for what the Select Board would do next.
Turn on the light. Turn on, literally, give.
I, no, yeah, I think it's, it's just, you know, do a review. Um, you guys, you know, sit with Audra and Jeremy and talk through kind of the next steps, uh, you know, because Audra and Jeremy know kind of what has to happen, I assume.
Right.
Steps.
Right.
You guys just.
Yeah.
What I was suggesting, a good question, Allison, I'm sorry, not Allison, Jenna, excuse me, uh, uh, is that they would put together a mini-action plan in terms of the items that Josh mentioned, the presentation with respective tips and all these other questions. And, and by the way, as an aside, I know there is some Q and A questions about, you know, moorings and all that. They're great, great questions, but we're not ready to address those at this meeting at this time. We'll get there. Uh, but I think, is that a good idea to, to, to summarize for us? What action's gonna happen over the next months, and then will be required from the Select Board to move on various of these items that Josh mentioned? Did Audrey, this relate to you?
Yeah, I, I think the importance of tonight is for, um, the Select Board as well as the broader community to know that, um, this project is forthcoming. There's still a lot of details that need to be worked out, and, um, it's, it's really just making it all public so that as Jeremy and I move through the process with Lyman Morse and, you know, as we get to the point where more aspects of this project are ready to go before the Select Board, the Planning Board, Harbor Committee, CDAC, everybody's aware that this is happening, and, um, it, it more or less has the Select Board's, you know, blessing to move forward so that we can flesh out some of these details.
One second, Allison. I have Taylor here, his hand up a few minutes ago.
I did. Um, my question was kind of about timing and process, so that's, I'd mostly gotten answered, um, thanks to the efficiency, um, as usual. Um, Josh and Drew, the, you guys allude to sort of a September deadline. Is that, um, deadline related? That's, is that the grant sort of expiration that you need to be in a certain place to be able to make use of that million and a half dollars?
Yes.
And what, where do you need to be by September, um, to be able to make sure that you're making use of that? Is it just having the approvals completed?
We need to, we need to essentially have, um, our, all of our agreements, how we're going to move forward with the project, um, finalized by that point.
Okay.
Not the specifics necessarily, but rather the, the how.
Okay. Um, thank you for waiting, Allison. Go ahead.
So I hear you saying that this is just an introduction. When I'm looking at the timeline, um, and this happens to me every year, and sort of the shock and horror of needing to prepare for the June ballots, and, um, they always tell us that, you know, the, the deadline is, is this. So I'm looking at April 6th is the, is what has been sent out to us as the last date for public hearings for warrant articles. Now, like, when, when we're talking about putting new things on the. now, like, when, when we're talking about putting new things on the, on the June town meeting warrant, um, right now, we've been told basically no more stuff. Um, and now this to me is pretty massive. So I, I'm curious to hear, I guess, maybe from Jeremy about how we can even, I would be panicking if I were.
I, um, we, yeah, when, uh, when Drew and Josh kind of talked to us about putting this on the agenda, we were pretty upfront with them that there was just no way this was going to make it on the June ballot and that
Okay.
we would, it would have to be a special town meeting.
Jeremy, you want to add to that?
Yeah, Audra's exactly right. And I think a special town meeting after the Harbor Committee reviews this proposal, after, you know, CDAC, after everyone, you guys are engaged in this process. I mean, it, it's TIF, it's development agreement, it's, you know, all those kinds of things. Um, so it takes time and we know it takes time, but we need to kind of, if this, we're going to assist in this project and have this be a real public-private partnership, we just have to move these things along in order to get, help them, Liman Morse, get to that September deadline. So it's, we're going to start that process, I think, fairly quickly. And I, from my perspective, you know, how you've approached the Harbor or the different committees has been appropriate. I think this is one of those cases where you say, staff, let's get the Harbor Committee working on some of these things and just let, let's start this process going because it does need to, need to play out.
Thanks, Jeremy. Uh, Jenna, you have another comment?
Just one more tiny thing. I know we need to move on. I just want to, I want to say that, you know, as we, you're asking for our blessing, you're asking for staff time. Um, I think as a board, it's important to acknowledge the amount of staff time going into a project and, you know, what can be expected and just have that kind of working relationship established, not sort of run away with our town staff. Um, I know this is a big project and it, it's a, it's a big change for Camden. Um, they proposed. Want to make sure that everyone feels okay, um, about that.
Well, Audrey, what's your opinion?
I mean, it is a really big project, but it's got the potential to be a really great partnership that allows us to achieve a lot of the goals that the select board has outlined. Um, and also like, you know, like Josh and Drew were saying, if we do this correctly and, you know, there's, there are problems with the TIF that we've needed to fix for a while, but if we do this correctly, it's not just about Liman Morse and their project. It's about all the private property owners around the harbor and trying to incentivize them to be able to make the changes that they're going to need to make for the town to be sustainable into the future.
Hmm, okay. Um, I want to tell. Taylor, please.
Um, yeah, I, I just like to say, I'm, I'm very supportive of seeing this move forward. Um, and, and I could see the potential for it being very beneficial to the town economically and in other ways. Um, there's no question that there's investment in the harbors, north and south of us and that. Um, um, it would be crazy for us not to explore this opportunity. Um, and I say that knowing that, you know, this is the start of giving the residents, um, taxpayers, voters, the opportunity for several opportunities for public input and public comment along the way and that's going to be a key part of the process.
Absolutely. Allison, go ahead.
So, um, I'm, feel like we needed to have started this a lot, a little bit earlier, just to make sure that we can do it, um, justice. Um, but I'm a little bit confused about where the climate resilience benefit lies. I can see that the, you know, the wave attenuating docks could certainly have something in terms of sea level rise, but um, and I obviously see that there's a lot of, um, town infrastructure needs, but also what I'm seeing in your plan is a lot of, um, additional armored shoreline, which, um, I, you know, impervious surface near the shoreline, um, with the, you know, the, the way that the walking path is. Um, and that would generally be not something that's recommended, um, in terms of just a lot of the grant funding that the town's been seeking. They're encouraging us to use less concrete, less hard surfaces, move a little bit farther, rather than armoring the shoreline, just move a little bit farther from it. Um, where, how, are there opportunities? Are there other things that you see that are helping the town prepare for climate change? Um, I guess, I guess I'm just not seeing the connection.
Before I have Drew answer that question, I, Audra, just going to kind of pulling the board, are you in favor of the towns, uh, expending the resources that they're talking about here to investigate further these projects that they've talked about?
Yeah, yes.
No, no, I'm sorry, Audrey, I meant Allison. Got my A's confused. Sorry, guys.
I'm really concerned about the amount of time that I, I think this is really important and that we can do it right in a way that probably would allow us to use a ton of it as matching funds for, for grants that the town needs to pursue to do the other work. The stuff about like getting people down to the harbor to experience educational signage, being able to walk all along the harbor, um, is, is something that could dovetail really well with even things that we're looking at with changing the dam or people have always wanted to be able to get from, I know some people don't, but like from Harbor Park over to Public Landing. And if you could walk all along there as you're going, you could learn about the history of boat building in Camden and you could learn about like the history of the um, environmental changes that have been made. And it could be like this dream opportunity part, you know, public-private partnership that I'm really excited about, actually. And, um, I just want to make sure that, um, we do it, you know, in that kind of a way that sort of has a consistent narrative. I'm a little fearful that we don't have enough time for it. So, I mean, I wouldn't personally willing to put some time into it too. I don't know how the town, town staff, I just, I don't know how we can get this all done in a really great way before.
Right, right.
I'm supportive of doing what we can and I think it needs to be a little bit more, some of it needs to be the select board taking, um, a real interest in it and not just having it be all town staff and then like unveiled to us at the end, because that kind of sometimes breeds frustration. Um, and if we're going to need to be defending this and pitching it to voters, um, I want it to be something that, you know, I think we can all be proud of and I think we can get there, but.
Right. Thanks, Allison. Good input. Now, Mark, what's your opinion?
Um, I, I'm totally supportive of it. I think it, you know, we're looking towards the future. You know, everything about it, it's, it, it helps our year-round economy. It helps jobs. Um, it, it supports, you know, a lot of our um, town stores and restaurants and, and bed and breakfasts. Um, I, I think it's, it's, it's really supportive. I do have one question. You know, after the fire, you, you'd come to us with some changes you wanted to do there. And there's some questions about being able to do as much as you wanted to do with sea level rise because of the town restrictions on height. And I wanted to know with this whole project, has that, has, have you changed any of the work you were planning to do for just a fire repair? Um, and can we look at that? Can we still look forward to, um, getting as much resilience for sea level rise as possible?
You know, are you saying in terms of, um, the height restriction based off the, the new?
That was that had restricted, you were still building down. I'm curious if this has changed what you're going to do with some of the buildings. Um, or is it something we still need to look at, maybe with Jeremy's help? About easing that restriction a little bit so that, you know, sea level rise, you know, no matter, you know, what we, what, uh, we want to do, um, the sea's going to rise, the sea level's going to rise and we need to be as prepared for as we possibly can. I think it's real important. And obviously, it is, um, you're going to be a huge part of our harbor, which is so important. The more you can do is the more help everyone, like it was just mentioned with the tip. The more you can do, we can do with you, will help everyone else.
Yeah, I think, you know, in terms of height restrictions and things like that, for what we're looking at, that won't affect us because I think our elevations are quite a bit more over there. Um, I'm not a hundred percent on where we sit compared to the inner harbor, but inner harbor had the challenge because it's quite a bit lower.
Mm-hmm, good. Um, I guess in, in general terms, from my perspective, I'm definitely supportive too. However, to Allison's point, do I, again, the, the timeframe is short. Uh, we think we're here in mid-March and September is only a few months away, you know, to do stuff. So it, it, it suggests a very interactive process and not a head-on tail process. So we're going to have to probably, uh, figure out some way to make sure all parties, including us, are involved in this development as we go forward and the public, of course, in parallel. Because the last thing we want to do is get into a, a special town meeting with, uh, no information being out there. That, that could be trouble. So keep that in mind as you develop with the town, with Audrey and Jeremy and how to incorporate some of us or how to keep us apprised and to make sure we're apprised well enough to be able, to be able to respond to the constant questions we get about things going on in the town. That's what it really comes down to. Jeremy?
Yeah, Bob, I, I think what has to happen is, is a public process. So I, I think there's definitely going to be plenty of of public, um, comment, public discussion, Harbor Committee, um, you know, there's a lot of the things that need to happen and it all has to be in the public. So you can be assured that that's going to happen. And I, I will say Liman and Morse is, you know, they have their act together, um, moving this forward and there, this is not just from their perspective, they've been working on this for some time. So, um, you know, they're coming, um, you know, with a lot of information and we're just at that process now. So, um, thank.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Drew. Thank you, Josh. Um, it is a lot to digest, but, um, it, it's important. Uh, I think you can hear that the select board is supportive. Um, however, there, there are logical trepidations about the timing and we have to be careful, as you well know. You've already said that. So, so thanks again. I look forward to talking to you very soon on this and more as the, as the details develop. Thank you, gentlemen.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks, everybody. Yeah, appreciate it.
Ciao. Um, one second. Um, okay, um, we're going to move on to our, uh, next agenda item, which is a public hearing on liquor license applications. Um, again, I'll repeat the same thing I've mentioned in the past to us, that we don't have public input because of our current situation. So I will forego the discussion on the format of public hearings and and skip the part that's actually input from the public since we don't have any. And reverting, uh, to, uh, the select board deliberation on two, uh, liquor licenses, one for the Captain Swift Inn at seventy-two Elm Street for class five bed and breakfast liquor license and the Blue Harbor House Inn at sixty-seven Elm Street for a class five bed and breakfast liquor license. Comments or a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, Captain Swift Inn at seventy-two Elm Street for a class five bed and breakfast liquor license and the Blue Harbor House Inn at sixty-seven Elm Street for a class five bed and breakfast liquor license.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Roll call, Allison.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Mark? Aye.
Bye-bye, five zero. Thank you. And I'll close the public hearing and, and move on to item five, which is approval of a Vittler lodging license for the Captain Swift Inn at seventy-two Elm Street for a Vittler lodging license and the Blue Harbor House Inn at sixty-seven Elm Street for renewal of a Vittler license, a Vittler and lodging licenses. Discuss, um, discussion, motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, you sound very familiar, that we approve the Vittler and lodging licenses for the Captain Swift Inn at seventy-two Elm Street, uh, and for the Blue Harbor House Inn at sixty-seven Elm Street.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Roll, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Well, I, five zero, thank you. We'll close out that item. We will move on to our, our action names. We have three. Um, the first is the approval of a name to be added to the Village Green Honor Roll. And that name, of course, is Scott Allen Daley. Any comments from the board? Motion?
I, I, I just say I've, I've read through, uh, his record and all the things and it's a very appropriate thing that we do, I believe. So I'll make a motion that we approve his name to be added to the Village Green Honor Roll.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Not hearing any, um, roll, Allison.
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
And bye-bye, five zero. Thank you. The second item is, um, action regarding the format of our forthcoming June secret ballot is, I assume what you're talking about here, Audrey.
Um, well, that's.
Slash secret ballot.
Yeah. That's what you need to decide. Um, do, this year, is it going to be the bifurcated town meeting? If so, where do you want to hold the, um, open floor portion of the meeting, which is on the Wednesday? Um, or do you want to proceed as you did last year with ballot only voting on the Tuesday?
Got it. Okay. Allison, go ahead.
Um, having read the conversations that have taken place in other towns about this issue, um, I feel very strongly that the best way forward is is for us to go with what we did last year in terms of doing everything on a secret ballot. We just don't know exactly what the, the limit is going to be come June for, um, public gatherings. Um, there's just no reason to paint ourselves into a corner by forcing a format that might not be responsible.
Okay. Um, Taylor, you had your hand up first, then I'll get you, Jenna.
Uh, yep, I completely agree. I think that, um, doing what we did last year and putting everything on secret ballot is clearly the path of least resistance and, um, it just makes the most sense, um, since we're just not sure what's going to happen.
Okay. Jenna, go ahead.
I think it's all been said for me. Um, I agree and I think I see all of these organizations and organizations I sit on the board of that are trying to put event schedules together and really struggling. And I think to just set it and set it for a secret ballot and know that we can do that, know we can execute that and we have given people their access to the democratic process. I think it's by far the best choice.
Mark?
I'll add my vote to it as well. I, it's, the, the governor has opened up indoor structures and it's a possibility, but there's no guarantees that it will stay that way. And we need to guarantee a proper procedure for our voters. And so I think this year, again, we do the, the secret ballot.
Right. I think, um, I think there's no disagreement here, Audrey, myself included. Do you need a motion here?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that this year's, uh, this, we, uh, combine the town meeting into the secret ballot on Tuesday, whatever that date is. Do we know what the June, uh?
I don't have it in front of me. Hold on a second.
Something I remember from last year that Bill chimed in on when we had this conversation, um, he specifically pointed out that the select board, um, is ordering that the um, meeting be held by secret ballot. I just remember him keying in on that.
So, man, so that make a motion that we order that the, uh, town, town annual town meeting be held in conjunction with the secret ballot or with the secret ballot, however Bill wants to properly address.
On June eighth.
And on Tuesday, June eighth.
And I would, um, if you need it to the motion, I'm sorry, it wasn't seconded yet, sorry.
Second. Seconded.
Okay, a motion made in second, uh, discussion. I, I was just going to, Audrey, um, I know it's necessary not, but the motion should be clear that we're talking about the same format as we did last year and not, uh, in terms of the various elements of a secret ballot.
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, the, um, the actual order will be part of when you approve the warrant. Um, and the warrant sort of specifies it's all secret ballot, but this is more of, you know, even before we get to that stage, we need to make preparations. So that's why.
Yep.
You know, I need a motion and a.
And of course, understood. Any other discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Thanks, Jenna. And bye-bye, also five zero. So you, that's, um, that's, uh, uh, behind us. The third item we have is a, um, action regarding the tannery and the next steps there. And, uh, after, of course, we had the, um, the, um, what do you call it? The, um,
Workshop.
Workshop last night, losing track of the names. But anyway, um, that's the next action item. Um, discussion. Mark?
Um, I have a lot to say about it and, and I may be very unpopular with what I have to say about it. But I came away from the meeting last night, I came away from looking at all the proposals and the work that's been done. And I'm not happy about any of them. I mean, it could be in favor of, um, almost all of them have good plans and, and stuff. I, I, I listened to the audience we had last night. Uh, I was surprised that there was not, uh, more, uh, approval for some of, for the apartments, for the, uh, the, the, uh, uh, the workshops, um, Habitat for Humanity had some nice comments, the park had some nice comments, but there were problems with all of them. And I'd like to go through with my thoughts about it so that I can understand what we have in terms of the, uh, um, the apartments, when I was surprised at the lack of support, but I'm seeing. the apartments. When I was surprised at the lack of support, but I'm seeing comments from people and I'm feeling that in order to make it, as they said, financially viable, they need to have a large apartment building, fifty units and such, they need a tip from the town. You know, so the town's going to be contributing a lot of money for over a long time. And I worry about that many apartments on that smaller property. People talk about, well, we'll only have one car parking, but that's not realistic in terms of most families have two cars these days because they need them if they're going out to work. So I'm concerned about the size of that and the financial modeling there for the the workshops, the crane sport. I'm concerned that a lot of the work is unfinished. You know, it's a good plan, but it's unfinished. It's almost like we don't want to make the commitment to go all the way. So we'll just sort of tip our step, put our toe in the water and see what happens. And to me, it's sort of like if they're not building workshops, they're building a house. It's like, okay, we're going to build you a house, but we're not going to put windows in it. We're not going to put water in it. We're not going to put plumbing in it, but you can go live there. And if you want to make any of those improvements, you can. And when you're done, we get to sell the house. It just didn't seem to work for me for Habitat for Humanity. We know them, we like them, we know they do their job, but they just said, we'll come and we'll build three houses there. And there's not a lot of planning down there. And I know they're very busy, but I'm concerned about that. I would have liked it, they mentioned and the park people mentioned that they'd like to work together, but they've never spoken to each other. They keep talking about it. And with the park people, you know, they talk about great plans, great stuff, but I see no signs that they've done the work that needs to be done because the town staff can't do it. We can't vote for a park and then go to the town staff and go, by the way, you have to design it, build it, maintain it. None of that has been in the in the property. You know, there are landscape architects out there that design parks and stuff like that. I feel that that work should have been done and they should have made a commitment to the Habitat for Humanity, sort of work with them to try and do a real business plan. So I have problems with all three of them and I don't feel that I would be justified in picking one over any of the others to rush it on to a June ballot when I don't feel good about any of them. And like I said, I could vote for any of them if they were done and and properly to fit the property and fit what the town needs, but I don't see it with any of the three right now.
Four.
Any of the four, sorry. I keep thinking park and I feel that I feel strongly about, and I've been put a lot of thought about because I was leaning towards a couple of different ones, said, this sounds good. I like this. But reading the plans and hearing the comments, I don't see the work and the effort being where it needs to be at this point.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Other comments? Taylor?
Yeah, I have several thoughts and comments. I will make some of them now, I guess, so I'd like to hear how our discussion goes. And I do have a proposal that was not my idea, but a proposal that I support for how potentially we can move forward tonight. I think in a in a constructive way that does not throw the baby out with the bathwater if it is the case that nobody seems to find one particular proposal that has all the answers. I don't think that that's true in anything in life. To me, I'll just kind of go through my thought process so people sort of understand how I'm arriving at where I'm at. To me, the there's been a lot of talk about how since two thousand five and earlier talk about what to do with the the tannery property. We've heard lots of comments and gotten lots of emails from people that have been involved over many years, decades at this point, numerous groups. And and that the what to do with the tannery site has been looked at from a number of angles and I and I respect that. I think the thing that is important to me is is what we're facing today. What are the priorities and the needs of the town and its residents today? Because certainly not all of those are the same as they were in two thousand five or two thousand eight or two thousand thirteen or later. Some are the same, some are not. To me, the the biggest problem that we are facing as a community that we have potentially an opportunity to make an impactful change with this property is our housing problem. Housing affordability in Camden and this area is a huge problem. And I think that to me not addressing that in a meaningful way with the tannery property that which is one of really only a couple of properties that town actually has total control over would be a huge missed opportunity. The affordable housing is mentioned twenty-five times in the comprehensive plan. And I realize that the comprehensive that the comprehensive plan has a lot of things that each proposal might address. I know that Crane Sport has been brought up as a sitting in the comprehensive plan well, but affordable housing is talked about considerably in the comp plan. And I just want to read a couple of brief pieces of the comp plan that I think are worth highlighting. Just at the very beginning of the housing section in our recent comp plan. The issue of affordability has not changed since two thousand, since the two thousand five comprehensive plan. Much more must be done if the town is going to truly address an issue that was described as a crisis in the previous two thousand five plan. The plan goes on to describe the Camden Affordable Housing Committee, different ways that we've looked at it, our current subsidized low income housing, other housing stocks affected by income. But another sort of holistic piece of this that really concerns me, if we don't take meaningful steps, actionable steps to address it is one of the final sentences as they're ticking through problems, is that the inability to attract people from all income levels coupled with an aging population and a significant number of homes occupied during the summer months only could erode the fabric of our community, its economy and participation in town organizations. That's scary to think about. So to me, that's just a very brief couple of paraphrases from the comprehensive plan for why I feel like affordable housing right now, today, is the number one issue and need that we should try to address. Whether that's addressed with a specific proposal that we have in front of us now, well, I think we still need to figure out a little bit. But that's how I'm approaching it. So to me, the Northland's proposal, I think quite obviously addresses affordable housing in the most impactful way with just keeping the tannery site in mind. I realize that there's discussion about potentially using other sites for affordable housing and we could use, we control the Sagamore Farm piece as well. But I think I want to be careful about saying we might do affordable housing later and use the tannery for something else now that might be a better fit for the neighborhood. I can see argument for that, but continuing to kick the affordable housing can down the road, which the comprehensive plan even points out has been done before. It's been kicked down the road. Almost feels irresponsible to me. So I think it has to be addressed in a meaningful way. And Northland's does that, although I'm not in love with the Northland's proposal. I think that there are certainly questions that need to be answered in more detail. I think they did a good job of answering the questions that we sent them last week. But I'd like to see that drilled down more.
Okay.
Next to that, I'll try to wrap up soon, Bob.
Oh, no, no, please, this is important. Go ahead.
Just for me personally, and hearing a lot of people talk about the different proposals and thinking about, you know, being a Camden native and I grew up on on Upper Pearl Street and always out being outdoors was a big part of my life and still is. I'm a big fly fisherman and I fly fish on the McGonigah River in that very section of the tannery site all the time. I'm constantly using our outdoor recreation spaces. Personally, I've never felt like it really is a need that is lacking. I understand the want to have more green space, but I don't necessarily feel like it is a need that trumps other needs. So with the Northland's proposal in on one side, I think that the Crane Sport proposal next to it is in some ways equally as exciting to me. I think that the Crane Sport proposal as discussed in the seat act evaluation as well gives us a lot of opportunity for that will be beneficial to the economy, more space for public events that we don't have now. We have lots of great spaces for certain types of public events, but we don't have something like what is being proposed in Crane. To me, it's very exciting. There's something very attractive and glitzy about that proposal that gives us a very unique opportunity to do in that eco village and sort of permanent farmer's market area to do something that we just don't have space to do things like that now. But next to the the Northland's proposal, as much as I love Crane Sport, it still feels like a want next to a need. The affordable housing is a need. The things that Crane Sport addresses are wants. The those are the two that rise to the top for me the most out of the four. I think that certainly, you know, looking at it really as three proposals, because if we were went forward with the Tannery Park proposal, coupling with that with with Habitat's proposal certainly would make sense. I think so the other the other two proposals besides Crane Sport and Northland's, I love Habitat for Humanity, their model works well. It's tried and true. We're working with them on Willow Street and in other places. I think that there are opportunities to use Habitat as a community advantage as as we are in other places. I don't feel though that unless we hear from from Habitat for Humanity that perhaps they do feel like they will have more bandwidth in the near future to build out more than two or three houses. If we could set that whole lot aside for Habitat to build many units, maybe some duplexes, many single family homes so that we have more of an impact, that would be interesting to me. But I feel like the conversation we've had so far and the message we've been getting so far is that they're just sort of tapped out in terms of resources right now, which is a good thing. They're busy, which is good. The in terms of Friends of Tannery Park, I understand their support for it in the community. You know, I think that certainly I lived in that neighborhood, I would support that as well. Who wouldn't want to park next to their house? I completely understand that. But in looking, making the tough decision and looking at it from the community as a whole, is that the best use for that property? I don't believe it is. I think that more green space in that area, of course, it would be beautiful. It would be wonderful. But again, it's a want while we have a need on the other hand. So to me, Northland's and Crane Sport rise to the top. I think that there's been some smart question brought up about, you know, how can we evaluate what we can do at Sagamore Farms potentially with affordable housing that might make us better decision what to do with the tannery site. You know, I do feel like we should act in June in some way. So I'd like to see us potentially narrow things down, discuss this and narrow things down tonight and maybe that there's some work that can be done over the next couple of weeks, specifically with those two developers, if that's sort of where we land on answering some of the more finite questions that people may be concerned about. And at the next meeting in two weeks, maybe we find ourselves in a position where we're better equipped to either pick one or say we tried and we're just not there yet. But I'll I'll pause for now. That's kind of where my head's at. I'd like to have I have a path forward that I'd like to see us go tonight.
Thank you, Joe. That's very, very good. Allison, go ahead.
Yeah, Taylor just articulated so beautifully most of my feelings. I feel a very similar sense of urgency about affordable housing. Like a real sadness too for what I see in our community, what I remember growing up when it was already a problem, but I didn't recognize it as strongly, thinking about my kids going to school and all the all the wonderful new people that are moving to town. And, you know, enjoying that process of 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 meeting the new people that have discovered our town from other places, but also watching as the, you know, the average or the, you know, the minimum income level that meets that threshold to be able to to break their way into our community. It just is going up and up and up and up. And I I think it's such an essential part of of who we are that we are interacting all the time with, you know, people of, you know, different economic means. And so we need to be braver, we need to be bolder. It's not okay that we just keep talking about this. We are making any headway in this area necessarily is going to upset people. It is not good enough to give a house or two away to Habitat for Humanity every once in a while so that they can make a house just look exactly the same as we're used to seeing in our communities. It's going to be this massive, you know, a large single family home that just perfectly blends. And if we're really serious about continuing to welcome people from all over the world to our, to the most beautiful harbor in the world, things like that. When those people come here, they also think it might be a nice place to have a second home. And they're buying houses all the time and it's just shutting other people out. And so we're going to have to find less desirable looking housing in order for the housing not to be attractive to you know, the second home market. Some of it's gonna gonna be a little bit offensive to some of the sensibilities of Camden, you know, Camden people, some of us. So the Northland proposal for so many reasons is really, really exciting to me. And basically, it's what it what it says to us is that they need about two acres and a place with water and sewer and power in order to be able to make fifty units of affordable housing work. This is incredibly exciting to me and that's, you know, the reason why I, you know, share Taylor's feeling about about the being a great thing for the tannery. I also feel that having watched the tannery process unfold for for many years from from watching it as, you know, functioning to watching it fall down to walking by it, all of these things. The the town voting to spend a million dollars cleaning it up with the with the understanding that we were doing this for an economic development benefit in the long term, we're still paying off that bond and we will be for the next few years. We're still paying that 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 was kind of a contract with Camden voters. And if you look at the history of what Camden voters have actually voted on, not what this community group or that community group or what Allison thinks or what Jenna thinks, but what people have actually voted on, it has always been that this was going to be a commercial part of town. Our zoning says that. The guiding principles that we vote on every single year at town meeting says that. The first round of the of, you know, the Tannery Work Group says that are there every everything that people have ever voted on, the straw poll that was put out when when the Camden Select Board in two thousand fourteen got frustrated because they had found a possible buyer with northeast ambulance and there were, there was outcry in the community. They put out a straw poll to say, all right, does everybody want open space? Can park or open space or do we want business commercial? And it was came down slightly in favor of business commercial when people were actually asked. And so it's it's been this dragged out process where ultimately what people have voted on hasn't really mattered as much as what groups have said, you know, in emails to the select board. So a huge part of me want believes that when you put this much town planning into a property over this many years, that people deserve the chance to vote on something that complies with every single requirement that has been set forth. Just at the last town meeting, we voted on these on making sure everybody does every year, the seven guiding principles that if the tannery is to be sold, it will comply with these seven guiding principles. And it's it's all about the economy. And so why didn't we say back then, you know, that was almost the voter saying, all right, select board, if you're going to work on this, you work on something that complies with that. So a lot of me wants to say I'm not going to necessarily weigh in on whether I think, how I think people should vote, but I think people deserve a chance to vote on that on the Crane Sport proposal because it complies with all of our current zoning. That said, I, if we weren't able to at the same time kind of bind ourselves to also doing something that provides an equal or similar affordable housing benefit as the Northland proposal somewhere else, then I I think I wouldn't be able as the Northland proposal somewhere else, then I, I think I wouldn't be able to sort of live with myself because I agree with Taylor's assessment of the need versus the want. And I would support, I think there are details that need to be hammered out. We've talked a lot about whether there's flexibility with this or there, or, or that, could the property be subdivided? Could we do my, the Crane Sport proposal and some dense affordable housing in, in this area or that area? Could Sagamore Farm work? That it's up to us to take the next two weeks and sort of scramble. I think that the question of whether we need more recreational space or more town park space is a conversation that should very ideally take place on the Budget Committee. And that we've had some great questions about trying to understand whether there would be an increase in the need for town staff time in the Parks and Rec Department. And that we can, really the best way to, to answer that is to have, you know, do what we do where the Budget Committee looks at the level of service and we have this conversation about, okay, these are all of our town parks. What is the level of, of town park service that people expect? What are all of the capital costs that we can expect in the next, you know, five to 10 years? Everything from erosion at Shertail to Barrett's Cove problems to the, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar tennis courts, the snowball. And say to, to, to people, do we, you know, this is how much more it could cost. Do we want to be plowing the parks during the winter? There's a lot of stuff that, I get complaints all the time about things the town is not doing with our current parks. And so I would really like to encourage the, what Taylor is, is saying, that the Friends of the Tannery Park kind of, that take place within a larger, more holistic look at our total town park space, the budget that we have and the budget that we need. And that we asked this appropriate town staff and whichever Select Board members are interested to take the next two weeks, really dig into some of these questions about ways that development agreements could happen, whether there's flexibility here or there, and come back with some serious answers.
Thank, thank you, Allison, very well done also. Ms. Jenna, you have your hand up there.
I do, and I don't think I could have said it better. I think Taylor did a marvelous job, I think everyone that's spoken so far has. I found myself very conflicted, needs versus wants. There are aspects of all of these proposals that I like, there are aspects that I very much dislike of some of them. And I just, I don't want to just reinvent the wheel after everyone else has spoken, but I believe that refining and exploring and making a decision on March 23rd about what to send forward to voters with a finer point on it is the correct action tonight, in my opinion.
Thank you, thank you Jenna. Yeah, I have to say, you know, they, like you Jenna, they've stolen a lot of thunder between Allison and, and, and Taylor. And by the way, I, I get Mark's points too, because I think to that end, I, I've never been through a situation, development of anything there wasn't questions, where there wasn't concerns, and there will be, this is a dynamic process. If we were, and I know Mark doesn't expect that, but if we were to try to get a perfect answer to every question, it doesn't happen. To that point, that's why you head down the road with development agreements and putting some of the flesh on the bone that I think Mark wants to hear about, and so do I. But from the, from the thirty thousand foot level, I can't tell you how strongly I feel about following what they've already mentioned about the comp plan. It's a priority. In fact, I bristle a little bit when I hear people talking about, wow, we do something like this over Sagamore Farm. When I know Sagamore Farm has its own issues with regard to water, sewer, owning issues that are there because of septic and, and the like that we will have to address there also. It is a great property and we will be addressing it. But yeah, housing thing, it doesn't mean we don't need, nice to have a, a open space. But it, it brings what I believe this town needs more than anything. Because as I sat last night and I myself, thought about myself, you know, all the people that came on, speaking from the homes that they love in Camden, and, and I think that's wonderful. More people be able to do that. And I know there are a lot of people who are frustrated with trying to find someplace to live in Camden and for many reasons, put their children to school here. Or as, as a transition from the three thousand square foot house to a, you know, to something that's between here and, and a return community. Yeah, I, I can't underscore everything you've said. I think that, yeah, there are questions, there will be a lot of questions, even between now and the 23rd. We won't be able to answer every single element, but we should put a dent in it and I, I can support that. I'd love the idea that Allison, you talked about, about going to the Budget Committee thing as a great avenue to discuss the town's level of parks. You know, I think somebody said we have twenty some, I forget the exact number, of parks that all have some needs. And that's not small. Doesn't mean we couldn't have more, but I think that discussion belongs there. So I, I, I in, in very strongly su- support the Northland proposal. I think it has a lot of elements that have to be discussed in it. You know, I get the Crane Sport thing too, but with, with, because of its lack of housing, if affordable housing is a priority and that proposal has no affordable housing element to it, then that, that gives me the, the little bit of heartburn there. So I, I, I think we can take this discussion and put Audra and Jeremy, put some more flesh on the bone on, on the two, I'm hearing very clearly, at least from three of us, that two of the proposals, and specifically Crane Sport and Northland, that we need to, you know, see what these development agreement kind of things can answer some of the questions there so we can make a logical decision on the 23rd, because I strongly support putting something on the ballot in June. I think putting it off is a mistake. I think we've got all kinds of exigencies with remediation and other things we need to address. And putting it, it's been put off too, in my opinion. So with that, it's okay, board, that's what we will do. Now, to that end, I think it's important that any questions the board has or issues should be given to Audra and so that she can understand each of us and what we want maybe clarified or addressed in, in terms of the development agreement, any specifics you have so we don't come on the 23rd and say, well, I forgot to ask, you know, Bob forgot to ask, whatever the heck. So I, I, I support this idea, but I think the 23rd has to be our, our date to move forward. Agreed? Alright, onward and upward. Thank you so much, great discussion, all of you, thank you. And poor Audra has more, and Jeremy has more work to do.
Can we, maybe should we just check in and make sure that, that, that sounded clear to Audra and Jeremy? And that this
Absolutely.
Sometimes we fail to
You are still
do that step where we say, can everybody repeat back what they think they've heard and
Yeah, Audra, Jeremy, especially you, Audra, do you, are you clear on the charge that we're putting on for those two proposals between now and the 23rd?
Yes, I, you know, I, I think what you would like to see, there'll be some details, of course, and I think that, you know, there are certain things that some of you are more interested in fleshing out than others. So that's going to be most important, I think, for Jeremy and I is, is understanding, you know, what are the, what are the outstanding questions that are really important to all of you as a group? And what are, what are some of the things that are, I don't want to say non-negotiable, but there, you know, what are, what are the elements of each that you really want to see changed? And if they're not, you don't feel like it's, you, you wouldn't have a level of comfort with putting it forward to voters.
How can we best collect those, Audra? How should we do that process? You know, we
How about, I guess based on, based on this conversation, how about Jeremy and I will take a stab at writing something out and sending it to all of you to look at? And if we missed anything, you can let us know.
And I think we need to do that this week. Two weeks sounds like a lot when you're sitting here on Tuesday, but before you know it, it's Friday and we're into an agenda setting for the next meeting. So yeah, I, go ahead, Allison.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that Eleanor Mason Peters has her hand raised for, I assume this agenda item for, for one, you know, whenever you deem it appropriate.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Allison, I will in a second. But I want to make sure we're clear on, on this, on this, so we don't, we don't have time for hiccups is my point. And I think we all know that. So yeah, if you guys, if you would draft something of what you're hearing from us with the two proposals and get it out to us so we can review and get back to you by the end of this week, is that okay, board? Sound fair? I don't hear any no's, so we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, this has to happen quickly because I'm worried about the time that it's going to take for them to draft a document and then we're going to look at it and then, so some of this needs to, in order for this to be heard, we need to be talking, we need to be really actively doing stuff. So I don't want this to, if, if they wait until the end of the week to write something up and then we do it, and then it's like Monday, they start.
No, I want, I said the answers from us would be by the end of the week, so they have to get it to us sooner.
But certainly some things from this conversation should be at least a, a little bit.
Sure.
Clear.
And, and by the way, to the, and Jeremy and Audra, to your mind, this development agreement, development of the development agreement, is this going to be in an outline form of a development agreement versus a legal form?
Yeah, I wouldn't, at this stage, definitely not a legal form. It would definitely be just like a bullet point list of, these are the types of things that you, we would want addressed in it.
That makes sense.
Based on, based on your feedback and concerns.
Yeah, of course, of course, that makes sense. But yeah, I, sooner the better, because I, I agree, this time is of the essence, without question. So if we, I, I'm just trying not to put too much pressure on you all to get something out, but the faster we do it, this is a priority. And I hear the board saying this is a priority, so yeah, we're going to put it at the top of the list and get it out ASAP like, like tomorrow. But, you know, I think you started that already a little bit, but I think
Yeah, we've, we've got, we started based on the conversation from last night, but you know, there's certainly, you know, there's, there's more that came out of it from this discussion. And I think, you know, I've had conversations with some of you individually where there's additional items that I think need to be
Right.
You know.
So the million When do you think you can get this to us for our view?
How about we'll endeavor to have it to you by the end of tomorrow?
That's great. And the Select Board will respond the next day.
Thank you.
Okay, cool, thank you so much. Allison, if you want to bring Eleanor in, it's fine.
So now we have, it's, the line is growing just slightly.
They're gonna, you know, we're gonna be careful we don't go awry here, but
No, I'm saying it's, it's three, I mean, we said yes, it's, it's three people, I think we said yesterday that this is an agenda item that is open to
Yeah, bring Eleanor in, please.
Yep.
Hello, here I am.
Hi Eleanor, I hear you, but I don't see you. That's okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay, here we go. Yeah, I just last night was interested to know about the process that, the way this is being done. Now, what I understand right now is you are going to decide which plan you can all agree on. And then we're going to vote on it. I was assuming that there would be the four plans and the town would get to vote on it. Individual people would get to vote on the plan they chose, but can you explain that to me?
Yeah, the, 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 the process we're proposing is the, is because of complications and with multiple items on a, on a warrant. The, the, the smart decision is to go with, with the way we're going, which is the, a single option that Select Board will select, hopefully in the 23rd.
Okay, so five people are going to decide about that, not the town.
I can explain that. So Eleanor, what I think you're asking for is like a multiple choice ballot where people get to pick. Do you want a park versus affordable housing versus the Crane Sport proposal? We've been advised by our attorney that we cannot do that because of what statutorily, the way that referendum or secret ballots work is that it has to be a straight yes or no tally of votes.
Correct.
Okay. So we, it can only be one up or down and we can't put multiple items on the ballot because then we would have competing ballot measures. So it needs to be one proposal, straight up or down, yes or no.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. No, you're very welcome, it's good to see you again. Allison, could you bring on Paul while you're raising your hand?
Yeah, I mean, Paul, Paul's already on, but just wanting to say quickly that that doesn't necessarily mean that the Select Board would vote on something and then that would be the only thing that would go before voters. What, you know, what may, and I, you know, I'm speaking only for myself, but what may end up happening is that it becomes a, a series of things. Something goes out to voters, the voters vote it down, and then I think that it would be incumbent upon us to be in the, in a position to say, okay, well, this is, if the voters vote this down, this is what we're going to do next. And, you know, put the next thing in front of voters, put the next thing in front of voters. That's just my own personal opinion.
No, I would agree, I would agree with you, Allison, have a plan and anticipate what may come down, so we don't do a head on tail situation. But with that said, Mr. Cartwright, please.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I had a similar concern and, and I, I can appreciate that the, the, the format we have to use is the up or down. I guess I just say that, and I've heard in your discussion this evening, some enthusiasm for the, the, the housing idea, and I think there may be support for that. But I just, I just think, you know, you're going to have to get the people to vote for this. And it's going, might be hard if you say, here's what we're offering you, and we're not offering you any of the other things you might want. So I'm not sure you, how you can deal with that, other than to do as Allison suggested. But I would just consider very carefully and try to really educate the people on all these issues as we have done. But as Mark pointed out, there are big holes in all these proposals. And so it's kind of hard for the, the voting public not knowing exactly, you know, if they say, well, we like the housing proposal, but maybe they want it to be only twenty units or, you know. So it's like you're asking people to vote for something, but they don't know what it is.
That's true of all four proposals. But anyway, PR play is very important, Paul, thank you very much for coming on, I appreciate it.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you, take care.
Oh, there we go. Now we have Steve.
Okay, and this will be the last one we'll take, so go ahead, Allison.
Okay. I don't see any more hands at this point, so.
No, I agree.
Shut those lights off.
No, leave on, Steve.
Okay, just one thing, I understand the path you're taking and I understand that there's more debate in the next two weeks amongst yourselves. And, you know, there is this fifth possibility of putting nothing on the ballot. In terms of this bullet list and discussion that you're talking about, in terms of the North, Northfield, Northwoods, whatever.
Northland.
Northland. I just don't feel that there's been enough discussion and information to the citizens about the financial impacts of that project and the TIF and what it's going to cost. And one thing I meant to point out last night that I forgot was that in Northland's own answer to the questions, they were touting three projects that they had been involved in, none of them were done with TIFs. So, that's for tonight.
Thank you, thank you so much, Dave, good to see you again, take care. Allison, where?
So it's, it, it does seem like this is one of those cases where there may not be a widespread understanding of some of the terms that are being used. And, you know, since we've, the word TIF has been brought up multiple, it's an acronym, the Tax Increment Financing, then brought up multiple times now with the, you know, the Lyman Morris Project and these, maybe if, maybe Audra, everybody would benefit from just a really quick overview of what, you know, what are we referring to here? Right now, the town receives zero tax revenue from the Tannery. So what's being proposed is a net increase in, in tax revenue.
Correct, so, and also Stephen brought up a point last night that I thought was really interesting about affordable housing. And, you know, he remarked on, and, and I'll get back to what TIFs are, but he remarked on there's a lot of affordable housing in Rockland and none of it was built using a TIF. Maybe not, there were different incentive structures in place when a lot of that was built and a lot of it is not for profit. So it doesn't generate any tax rolls. I was a city manager in Rockland, there were so many affordable housing developments that were not for profit. They weren't on the tax rolls at all. So instead of getting like twenty percent of the tax assessed value back through a TIF, there was zero value or taxes collected on that property. So, you know, with, with a TIF, when you So, you know, with, with a, when you create a taxi, in, when you create a, a TIF district, what you're doing is you're, you're setting up a certain geographic area and you're saying, within this area, we are going to capture any new value that's resulted in development on this, within this particular area. And we're going to determine what sort of projects we want to fund with that value that's created by the new development in that particular area. And those projects could, you know, it could be municipal infrastructure needs that you're addressing, or it could be private sector needs such as, you know, to make this sort of affordable housing project work, they need a bunch of different financial incentives in place. And so what they're saying is, we are going to share the tax revenue that we're generating by putting this development on this parcel with the town. We're going to put that money back into making this, this development affordable. And whatever it, you know, the, the 50% revenue, it's, I think it's less than that that of taxes generated, go to the town. And there's a lot of affordable housing across the state that the only way that you can do a project is through having a TIF district in place. That is just the nature of affordable housing. You have to stack federal, state, local incentives in order to drive the cost of doing that development down so that you can offer those units at affordable rental or purchase prices for people who are low to moderate income. And before, when there were better incentives in place, a lot of those units became not-for-profit housing units and they're not on the tax rolls at all. There is no tax sharing with the municipalities. It is like a blank spot in our tax bills where they don't pay anything for the services on a municipal level that are needed to have them in the community. So I would say that there are some benefits of that in that there was more housing when there were better incentives in place, more affordable housing that was able to be built that way. But it just doesn't work like that nowadays. And the benefit to us is, we do get some of that tax revenue back from these developments. Whereas in the past, we didn't get anything.
Thank you. That are good, that's important points. Thank you very much. With that, the workload is defined, Audrey and Jeremy, for the next 24 hours. Well, let's move on. We have a couple of discussion items on our agenda, item seven, first of which is described as select working census regarding ordinance issues for the June town meeting. The last meeting, we had a discussion about various items and, and my bad, I don't think I were forced to question, we've been asking tonight, and what is the board, board want to focus on? I think there was one ordinance element that did, I heard, and I want to confirm, it was consensus of the board and that was basically the short-term rental registration element that I saw virtually everybody in the board going like this and I think Jeremy, I think you're, want to make sure that, that, that one was clear. If anybody disagrees, let me know. But is it, other than that one, I didn't really get a sense of the board priorities and anything else. That's, that's, that's what, we want to be clear for Jeremy's benefit and for us, because time is short. We don't have a lot of time to get, you know, the, whatever we have to do to get, to get the warrant or whatever ordinance is, we, we want to, we want to push or revisions to ordinance is, we want to push through. Does that make sense to you all? And is there anything else that we believe the board recommended we go forward with for this June meeting regarding ordinance? Allison.
Everybody always already knows what I think, but I didn't hear objections last time.
That's what I'm clarifying.
So I understand the concern that Allison steamrolled everybody and, you know, just because they were silent doesn't mean they were.
And that's why, it's my bad, Allison, not yours, it was my bad.
Oh, no, it's fine. If, I, I don't know if everybody would like me to go through some of those again, or I have new ones too that I've thought of since then.
Well, it's twofold. One, other, are the other board, we presume, we can go over, Allison mentioned, wasn't the only one that mentioned ordinance about, but we, we've got to make sure we have clear direction, especially given the time here. Was there anything else besides, again, I didn't, tell me if I'm wrong, but I did hear the STR registration thing was a lot of yeses, heads nodding by the board members. Were there others that we missed in that, that, that process or my inefficient process?
Base flood elevation.
Okay, that was mentioned. Where's the board opinion on that as a priority for June?
Should we build a flood zone or should we not build, I mean?
I think it would be easier, sorry.
Taylor.
Uh, I think it would be easier if we looked at a slate of things to pick from to prioritize them. I guess I'd also kind of like to hear what, how much do we realistically have bandwidth for? I'm totally supportive of putting more stuff on there if it's a priority that we agree on.
Right.
I guess I just want to talk in, in reality a little bit.
Right. Yeah, that'd be a good point tonight. Jeremy, I'll have you to address because, right, there's a, the whole, the entire list we have is, they're all very valid. What do we practically speaking have time, given everything else we have on our plate, to affect beyond the STR registration proposal?
All right, so yeah, the real challenge for us, limiting factor is public hearing process. The last day that the planning board has to provide you with recommendations or warrant articles is March 23rd. That's the last day.
Well, let's focus on things that don't need the planning board, because we already know.
So that would be short-term rentals. We've got that and I have something drafted for that, so that's good and easy. Okay. I have a new updated draft of a floodplain ordinance that changes that takes into account the new FEMA, ordinances are required to be consistent with federal requirements.
Sure.
FEMA updates their model ordinance every now and again. So our ordinance, I have a, a draft version of a new ordinance that's current changes the base flood elevation to two feet, or the finished floor elevation to two feet above base flood elevation. That's fine. The challenge with that one is the, the zoning ordinance, there's a, there's a section in the zoning ordinance in defining street level and this has to do with height and it's awful, oftentimes used in the, comes into play in the harbor area. And that refers to one foot above base flood elevation for the finished floor. So there's a con, there would be a conflict there that the flood ordinance says you got to be two and it's a height issue. So I can work with Bill. It's not possible to get that to a public hearing. That would have to be noticed already for that, that for March 18th, that would have to go to them. I can chat with Bill Kelly tomorrow and see what happens. We don't actually run into this situation very often, though we ran into it with Lyman Morse's project, we ran into it with the Red Shed project. How many other times do we run into it in a, say, six months?
So Jeremy.
Floodplain and move something else.
Yeah, Jeremy, just to be, just to be summarized, that you were just saying is the floodplain ordinance itself is, it affects the, the the zoning ordinance because of the discrepancy between one foot, two foot and the zoning ordinance is the one that will require the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So what, what else on the list that you, that you, have you responding to the demand? What else did?
Do we have a list somewhere? I mean, I hear these, those were just examples last time, but I rattled off of feeling like, okay, why aren't we making more incremental progress in all the areas that we've identified? Ideally, we would have a list, a master list somewhere of things that can be acted on and in different steps.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I kind of work with a list all the time and things that come up in day-to-day operations. And so I can start sharing that with you and we can try to start, you know, narrowing, taking some of those off the list. But I want you to add some things to the list too. The, the parking issue came up the last time, Allison, and the planning board had a discussion about parking. They want, want to look holistically at the parking ordinance because they don't think it is appropriate and it's, it's very cumbersome. It's got a lot of issues. If we take away the parking in the B1, there's all sorts of other impacts in the ordinance itself. And they want to, they want to address that and they want to deal with it and they want to remove that parking requirement. Like go through the process that they should go through and, and do some due diligence on their own, on, on kind of figuring out what they'd like to do, so.
Is the parking ordinance their jurisdiction or is it just parking within the zoning ordinance?
It's parking within the zoning ordinance.
Okay, because we have, I think we've got another one that's parking and traffic and that thing, I mean, that's the last thing we need the planning board applying.
Just parking and.
Okay.
What about something like contract zoning? Just putting something out there to, you know, this has come up repeatedly that it may have to be a, like a two-step process where the actual contract zone might be reviewed by the planning board, but just putting out an ordinance ahead of time that says the town is allowed to create contract zones. Is there, I, I guess it's, it's trying to look at things where we may need a two-step thing. Maybe we need a paragraph in our comprehensive plan that speaks to the need for, you know, climate change adaptations so that in six months, we can create a new ordinance. But we sometimes get, get caught up in this, well, we can't do this because our comprehensive plan doesn't say this and then new ordinances need to be consistent.
Yeah, all these are, I mean, the planning board, when we had our last meeting, we talked about what we were diving into was comp plan amendments thing. And so I think it's a critical time to give me some more ideas on what the planning board should be jumping into on the camp.
And sometimes we might not need them to super, like, super review everything, like a simple thing. Okay, I've heard Audrey say a million times, it might be useful if the town could have contract zones. What's stopping us there? Is there an exam, you know, there's got to be some just copy and paste model ordinance that we could just put out. I don't know.
Right.
Work on that.
Well, I think, you know, this boils, it comes back to, we did discuss a little bit last time and I think we need to, to Allison's point, we need to get that your list, Jeremy, of what's in the queue and what the steps are if we get it to an election or whatever we want to do. And, and because that's the whole purpose of having this discussion really, because I think we, we shouldn't be trying to press my idea on, on something and you find out, you know, I don't know what is in the process. And yes, we can add to that list if we want, the board wants to make priorities, but I think each, on that, your list, I would presume to see that this changed, this changed, some of the ones we talked about, ones we talked about right now. And what is the process you're going to take forward to get it so that we don't get into a 11-hour discussion about getting on the nearest election? We don't want to do that. So we need kind of a format and that this will make your job easier too, because then quote unquote, there are no surprises.
Yeah.
That's, that's all.
It makes my job a lot easier and I think.
It does. It really does, Jeremy, because I'm hearing, that's why.
Six months, we kind of missed that.
We did. And I, and I think we need to have it going forward because, you know, what I'm hearing again is we have the STR registration thing moving forward, but everything else has some hiccups along the way. And in, and the select board has to have the opportunity to input into that list of its priorities for ordinance, new ordinance, revising ordinance, which is probably a huge list. But I'd like to have that, I'd like to recommend the board have that in the very near term, so we don't have this hiccup yet.
Yeah. Absolutely. We should do this every almost six months, right when the election has already been set, after you, in my opinion.
Well, I, I.
More language in place. Let's start for the next, next.
Well, I don't want to, you know, I'd like to see what's on the list and what's ideally planned for the next election November, what we should be thinking of next year.
Right.
We think of far ahead and not limited to just a six-month thing. No, I think we should.
Every six months.
We should update it, maybe.
Okay.
And, and different categories. So it's like, okay, these are, if you think about it like a chess game, these are the, these are the moves that are going to take multiple things. These are like the little pawns that could be moved forward. So when we have an opportunity, we can just say, okay, these are, these are quick and easy. These are going to take more discussion so that, you know, that we can stagger it all out. So we can see, okay, the, and you know, this is the goal that it's trying to to meet, because I agree, it's not, it's not good for me just to bring up things in a, you know, at the last minute and have a little temper tantrum about lack of progress and then everybody sort of like, I don't know, it's because we're missing, you know, or we're missing the bigger picture.
We are, and I think the list would be two, two blocks, ones that have to go through a planning board and ones that go through a select board. There's a big difference.
Right.
Well, whatever, whatever it has.
Whatever the process is.
Right. And because I, I believe strongly, and I think I'm hearing, I know the board agrees, we have, we have a large backlog of ordinance changes that need to happen.
Right. And I just want to make the point though, that this is the pendulum swinging back in the other direction, because when Jeremy first started, that's all he was doing. And there was a lot of dissatisfaction with that eating up all his time and not pursuing like the tannery redevelopment. So you know, like, this is, he had to spend a lot of time on that project and other ones like that. So I just want to make the point that yep, he, he did that work. So now we hear you loud and clear, you want the pendulum to swing back towards the ordinance.
I don't agree with that. I think what we're looking for is a balance. I, I think it's just that we, we shouldn't be coming up to a couple of weeks before a deadline.
I mean, that's, it's all good and well to say that, Bob, but the reality is these all take a lot longer than we would.
Understood, understood. But if we have this, this list and looking at it, we can collectively decide which ones we think are priorities and which ones are not. Everything shouldn't be a priority. I totally agree with you. Allison.
I mean, and maybe we need to, there, there was a time when we first started and maybe it was before Jeremy even, where some of us even wrote ordinances. I know that town staff doesn't love that, but the, sometimes we can divide up responsibilities and say, if, you know, if we have some kind of a master list, some of these are the kind of things that it doesn't take Jeremy to do.
It's not even really Jeremy's time. It's just as much your time and the public process to go through it all.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, that's, that's definitely true. I think that Jeremy though has, has learned some since that first ambitious undertaking of many different ordinances that certain, you know, the types of things that take a lot of time in Camden. My favorite example is serving dinner at Inns. You know, he just had no idea that he was jumping into a shark tank just because of the little dinner at, at Norm Bega, but that took a lot of time. And I think there's hopefully a little bit better awareness of.
I don't advocate that Jeremy be buried and do not want to go back to that place. And I don't think anybody on your board does, where, where are you spending 80% of his time? I think what's happening for time period on ordinance revisions. But on the other hand, I expect to hear from you and, and Jeremy and say, when that, and you decide, when that load is getting above, what, 25% or whatever the heck it is, we need to, we need to qualify what we expect, expectations to. I get, I get that. I agree. Just no surprises. We can have a long list and only be able to hit the top two or three. That's fine. That's, that's the way it goes. But anyway, right now, the priority that I hear for June, right at the moment is the, the STR registration ordinance thing that Jeremy says he has. And we'll probably take that to the 23rd, maybe, Jeremy?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. That, you know, the next item, Bob, on the agenda is talking about zoning map amendments. I don't know if you want to just roll right into that since we're talking about.
We have one person with a hand up, Jeremy. Let's, let's take that one person and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the, sorry, the zoning amendments. Audrey, I'll have you lead that in a second, but I think Anita had a hand up.
I don't know if you also saw that. I think Marcus had his hand up too, but.
Mark, why don't you talk? What were you for Anita?
I, I was just going to say, I think the important thing right now is to just have a list of what we need to decide on March 23rd because that's, that's when we may need to make final decisions for June, is that correct?
And that's what we just did.
So why don't we just get that and let's get it, let's get it so we can read it and make any changes before March 23rd? Because if we get to the 23rd and we need to make changes, isn't that a problem?
No, I think we have time.
The last day for public hearing on warrant articles is with you guys is April 6th.
Okay. So, but if we can see whatever, whatever you're writing is for March 23rd before that meeting, I would appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, Anita, you have a. Okay. Anita, you have a quick comment. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, express, I, I appreciate you working on priorities and I know that's uh, important to work out, um, in the discussion about Lemon Morris and they're moving forward and the other things that you need to move forward. I didn't hear Sagamore Farm mentioned. And I wanted to point out to, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to point out to the board that there are people who've made proposals and spent a lot of money and time fleshing out those proposals, doing surveys that are important for any developer, including the town itself, to have done before anything can be done. And they put that out there and they've been left for a year out, hung, hung out to dry and you're not talking about it while you're setting priorities now. And then, uh, Lemon Morris comes along and you're going to be working really hard on that to make that happen by September. So I would like the whole board to, to address this question.
Thank you.
About putting those people out there on the line.
We have Sagamore Farms on our radar, trust me. So thanks, Anita. We need to move on.
I mean, that was a huge part of, of sort of the due diligence conversations that have happened around the tannery and feeling like we don't know what's been proposed at officially proposed at, at Sagamore Farm. We really need to, to understand what's possible there. So I think you're, you are heard, um, but more than you actually might realize that.
Right, right. But anyway, we, we, thanks, Anita. We need to move on to our next. Good, good to see you again. Take care. Now, Audra, if you, uh, want to, want to address the zoning amendment articles, please.
I'm going to kick this completely over to Jeremy because he's the one who's been working.
I believe, do we have three? Is that correct?
Um, there's actually two, kind of a package of two, Bob. The first one is a zoning map amendment and, um, I think I can share my screen. Let me see if I can find it.
Okay.
Oh, not the screen I was looking for, but do you see that?
I see blanks. There it is.
Okay. And I was probably looking for another map, but this will do.
Okay.
So, um, for this purpose, maybe this is a little better. Show it.
Okay. Oh, I see.
Can everyone see that? It's a little, I'm sorry. It's upside down, but maps can be read upside down. So.
I can stand on my head. Go ahead.
Yeah. So this is the McGuntwick coming in here, right?
Yeah.
This is the, right here is the wastewater treatment facility.
Yep.
Um, this area is zoned B1. Um, and this is another portion of the wastewater treatment facility lot. This is the large storage building that I think everyone understands. I think we did a walkthrough there at some point.
Yep.
This, this is all going to be redeveloped as part of the wastewater treatment project.
Right.
Um, so the proposal is just to rezone this piece of the property to, um, B1 from Village Zone, what is currently now.
I see.
That's the proposal. The planning board discussed it a couple of times, had a public hearing on it. They, um, were fully supportive of the project. There were comments in favor of the project. Um, there was a neighbor who, and just so you know, is again, went through the public hearing process. Every butter got a notice. Um, we did one, one neighbor or one butter on, on Ross and Avenue did, um, take part in the meeting, had some questions, was satisfied with the, um, responses and what the reason for it was, and, and they were, um, happy, um, that it was going forward. Planning board voted unanimously for it. So they're really looking at you to, um, you know, try to schedule a, a hearing, um, for this. Um, it, it's been done through the hearing process and now it's you guys to set a public hearing for it and, uh, whether or not you want to, um, put it on a, to voters to June.
Okay.
That's the proposal. Um.
Okay. What do you need from us?
I, I did talk with D P, um, the Shoreland zoning, um, coordinator there. Um, he had no issues with the, um, the proposal because it's part of an existing developed piece of property. So there you go.
Um, so you, you, what do you need from us, Jeremy?
Um, just a, um, uh, recommendate or a vote to, um, schedule.
Motion to approve. Okay, Allison, you had your hand up first.
Yeah. So the only reason that I'm okay with this, um, is because it's a town owned property. Otherwise it would be a giant environmental step backwards. Um, the entire purpose is to allow for development in, um, you know, right up close to the river, which is bad. Um, and I want to make sure that, um, the town is bound in, if not by zoning, then, but in some other way, um, to, to not, um, do things that are, that are harmful and to not, um, I mean, I understand the river walk, it's, you know, going there and I support that, but I don't support more impervious surface in the flood zone and things like that. And so, um, my hope is that over the next couple of weeks, we could, you know, there could be a resource protection overlay or there, there are different options in the long run for protecting Mcgunnacook River from, for decisions. I'm a little bit scared. I'm a little scared of just doing this without doing some of the other things, um, because of a river walk right up next to the river. Um, you know, and removing vegetation and all of that would, would be a, a bad thing. And I.
Okay. Okay.
Are there other mechanisms that we have for protecting what future, um, select boards or town staff might think is appropriate to do within 15 feet of the river? After, once we make this zoning change.
Um, just so, um, the way I kind of look at this, I mean, I think there's a couple of, probably a few ways to look at it. You could, you know, obviously put some deed restrictions that run forever with the property. It's our property. We deed restrict the property. We could do that. We could also, you know, it, since it went through site plan approval recently, we also, um, last year we voted, uh, town voted to, um, change the, how amendments or revisions are done through to plans. Um, so if, if the town comes forward, say the wastewater treatment plant and wants to do some more, more impervious, even the, even the trail, um, from my perspective, going through there, we'll have to go to the planning board, uh, for review because of, it's a change. It's, I wouldn't call that as a minor change or minor revision. So that would go to any board. So there'd be review. Um, you guys are the control, the, and the town controls the purse strings too, um, in a lot of ways and control what happens on town property. So I would, um, I think there's a lot of things already in place that will protect it. Um, but we could add deed restrictions. And if you want, we could, you know, certainly move forward on this right now. And then we could, as time goes on again, on that list and again, because if I have to change this, the planning board has to rehear it, um, to change the language. We, that, that would be a
Right.
significant change. They can't do it.
No, I'm fine with going ahead and, and just doing the, the map change, but.
Yeah. I mean, I, I assured the neighbor that, um, she had similar concerns, Allison, and you know, after our discussion with the planning board and her, I think she was, you know, sure she was, um, thought would definitely do the right thing. And I.
I mean, I have no doubt that right now we're going to do the right thing. The idea that anybody should just trust the town process forever into the future and just completely absurd, honestly, because
Yeah.
we've not shown that we, we don't know who's going to be here in 10 years. We don't.
Right.
We don't, we didn't even build a school without damaging the river. So, um, I, I, I think a lot of people didn't find out about it too. I should have probably gone, gone to that. My, my dad lives right across the river. Um, we could just think maybe, you know, on the side brainstorm some ways that, um, we might add in some protections outside of the zoning process.
Sounds perfect.
Any other, any other board comments? Um, do I have a motion to or not to, uh?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to move, uh, the, uh, what is the, that zoning map amendment to change to, what does it change to the B1?
Yes, correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, to do that. And, and I say, I've seen the planning board meetings. It makes perfect sense. You know, the fact that part of the wastewater plant is in one zone and part of it's in another zone, I thought was sort of a surprise. And Jeremy's right, the butter was totally satisfied with, when she realized that's basically what we were just doing is putting them in name zone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Pro call Taylor.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Bob, I also, five zero. Thank you. A second amendment, Jeremy, could you explain that one?
Yeah, the second amendment, uh, this is a little different. This was, um, kind of a, kind of a petition driven, one, a property owner in town. Um, has, there's a process, just so you know, just it's a process to do zoning amendments. The town can initiate them or citizens can initiate them. And that's laid out in the zoning ordinance. And this one is, um, Chip Late up on, um, the park, he has proposed, um, some language change to the coastal residential zone. Went through the process, the public, the planning board held two public workshops on this. Um, we sent notice, which wasn't required, just so we sent notice, um, to all the abutters, um, ahead of time, even before the public hearing, just to include them in the process and make sure they could, could participate. Um, and, uh, the planning board again, um, is they're holding a, a public hearing on this next Thursday. Um, and just keeping you in the loop. Um, and we talked about it briefly the last time. Um, we would add tradesmen shops to permitted uses in the C R. And those are for, um, and that goes along with what's existing, which would be indoor storage. You can read it on there. Indoor storage, maintenance and construction of boats in existing, and we're adding that in existing commercial buildings on lots of acres or more. Um, and then the section, article eight, section five C uses and a permanent is a special exceptions, which go to the zoning board of appeals as a special except, exception would allow expansions of up of less than 10,000 square feet of new floor area, um, to those existing buildings, um, that we, up above, and the planning board had no issues with it. Um, there was some talk about the, the scale or the, the, the size of the building from, from, you know, from the, from, um, the park. And that was adequately addressed by the planning board, um, through the Z B A and the planning board process. And that was, um, that was mentioned so and discussed. Um, but they are fully in favor of this, it sounds like. And I certainly expect that they'll vote unanimously for this to, for you guys to move it forward to voters. So at this point, I wouldn't have any, any, no action from you is needed.
Right, right.
Do that the next time because they're going to hear this on the 18th and the last day for you guys to hear recommendations from Evan is the 23rd. For that on the 23rd.
Okay.
And schedule a public hearing after that, Bob.
Okay, cool. Is that the, um, I, I see two and three. You've covered two and three in this one capsule here that will be addressed by the planning board, the 18th, and we'll address it on the 23rd. Okay. Thank you very much. That is at the end of it?
That's it.
Okay, cool. Um, let me get back to where I was, wherever the heck that was.
Management report?
Uh, one second, Mark. Actually, yeah, actually, yes. Uh, Audrey, do you have anything to add, uh, from your management report perspective?
For the, for the sake of keeping this meeting going, I don't have, um, anything additional.
And Jeremy, would you, uh, un, unshare your screen, please?
Sure. Sorry about that.
Welcome. Uh, select board reports. Um, anybody want to make a select board report? Mr. Mark.
I, I have, uh, three things, uh, to bring up. Number one, the Opera House continues to do their sound check shows. They have one scheduled every Friday night in March and April. Uh, they did a, they finally had a, a committee meeting, um, and, and talked about it. And they've been doing these, uh, virtually every Friday night. Um, the artists come into the, come into the opera house and are filmed and is put out on Facebook, uh, Opera House Facebook Live. There are 16, um, previous shows online. If you go to the CamdenOperaHouse.org, you can, you can link to the 16 shows that have already gone out there. They're all free at this point. And there's some wonderful, wonderful shows and they've actually between, uh, with donations, even though we pay all the artists, donations have made them, it's been profitable for the Opera House. Um, so it's been no cost to the town to, to do these shows and there's some great artists. So CamdenOperaHouse.org, look at the, the, the shows coming up for March and April. Some great stuff. Uh, number two, um, mid-coast, we've been meeting the mid-coast community coalition, internet coalition's been meeting, um, discussing, uh, and we talked, talked about this a little bit last night, discussing, uh, getting high fiber internet to every household in, in all the homes. And we've been talking from South Thompson all the way up to Northport, I believe. There are some mid-coast guiding principles that they want the towns to, um, okay. And, uh, we're not going to do any of that tonight, but I'll mention them really quickly because it's something we'll talk about the next, uh, I think Rockport's already okayed them. Um, but because they're not on schedule, we'll talk about them at the next meeting, but really quickly, establish regional utility district through inter-local agreement as permitted by state law. Build a fiber to the premises, which is F T T P internet network to provide cheaper, faster and better high-speed internet access. Three, ensure that the network is open access, inviting multiple providers to deliver services to residents and businesses, which will offer a range of products, pricing options and competition. Uh, four, establish a minimum symmetrical speed of 100, uh, M B P S. I can't remember that what it's, uh, stands for. For download upload to be provided by any service provider leasing the utilities dark fiber network with the capability of providing symmetrical one gig for users choosing that option. Uh, number five, provide universal access to all residences and businesses within the geographic region of the utility. And six, best-in-class customer support with locally managed and operated offices. So in terms of developing.
Just so you know, I discussed this with Matt. Matt's going to be submitting these principles to us in the next days. We'll get it out to the board. It'll be on the agenda for the 33rd.
Okay. Just want to say we're just developing high fiber internet for everybody. It's, it's a modern thing. And lastly, um, I met with Jody Hanson today to talk about, uh, the, uh, snow, snowball, um, uh, financial report because the snowball is doing exceptionally well this year. And, and I said, why are we doing so? Right now, we're, you know, and there's still more billing to come in, more things going, but right now we're sitting about $200,000 in the black. And I asked, what's making the difference? And she said, it's basically the usage of the snowball, uh, daily tickets have collected over 291,000 daily tickets for this current year. Last year at this time, we'd only collected 200,000. Season tickets, basically the same thing, almost, uh, almost 90,000 or $80,000 ahead of season tickets. Race income is, is over, is, is over, uh, what was expected. And summer chairlifts did exceptionally well as well. And it basically, I think it's really important to, for people to understand that in a time of need, the snowball has been incredible resource for this town. Very important, very, uh, used, uh, in, in a town and a time when people need to be outdoors. It's been an incredible resource. And, you know, so I'd like to thank all the people working at the snowball, you know, putting in difficult times in, in a difficult year. Um, it's been very, very good for this town and I appreciate all their work.
Thank you.
Just to add to that too, yeah, it's been an incredible year, probably best one that we've all seen. Um, and we're going to do everything we can to keep it open as long as possible. Cause I know that given it was such a warm winter and a slow start, we want to do whatever we can to extend the season for as long as possible.
Thanks, Audrey. Appreciate it. Um, it has been a great year and maybe we'll keep our fingers crossed it stays that way. Um, other, other select word comments. Alice.
Comment or comments on that or just cut, just this is the general.
You're a select board reporter.
Okay. Um, so yeah, I don't have much except for basically, um, a desire to, to ask it maybe for the next select board meeting or sort of on an ongoing basis, we can get kind of a, a project update on a few things, um, for the board and for the community. We have, um, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is the, um, some of the wastewater upgrades that are going to be happening this spring and the, you know, just making sure that we get out ahead of any potential impacts on Main Street and Atlantic Ave, that sewer may, force main that goes across the harbor, um, now is, you know, can't do that for the,
Right.
for the future. I think a lot of people don't understand really how critical this is that we're, right now we're pumping sewage from over on C Street across the harbor through, um, a pipe that will not last forever up to the treatment plants. And, you know, a big part of our upgrades are, is rerouting that, um, down Atlantic Ave and then just, you know, a little stretch of Main Street. It's not a discretionary, um, fun project. It's, it's. it's really important, but we can, I think, work with, you know, just making sure that the business owners, um, you know, and the community sort of knows what's going on. Um, and that it's nice for us as select board members as we start to get questions, you know, to really be um, on top of what the, the plans are. Also, if we could just maybe get a check in on some of these things that, um, have been voted on in the past, like the, some of the sidewalk projects that have been approved. Um, I get, you know, quite a few questions about, you know, when is that, that, you know, that shirttail sidewalk going to happen, um?
Okay.
And the
Okay.
Uh, you know, maritime farms project and just, you know, just basically would be nice to have an update from town staff on where those things stand and any other, um, you know, big projects, construction type things that, that we should have on our radar for the summer.
Yep, sounds good. That sounds good. Thank you. Um, Mr. Penzi, you had your hand up.
Uh, yes, um, a couple of quick things, um, more of a serious and solemn note. Um, I want to highlight, um, a new initiative that our local fire departments are undertaking um, for home fire safety. Um, February was obviously a devastating, um, month here, um, in Camden and across the state. Um, four people's lives were claimed in house fires in the month of February in Maine, um, which hasn't happened before in a very long time. So the Camden Fire Department, um, and in combining efforts with Rockport and the Rockland Fire Department are highlighting a new, um, home safety initiative, um, where they're asking residents if you have any questions about, um, home fire safety in your home or need any assistance at all, really, not to hesitate to reach out to your local fire department. Um, these are things like help with smoke and seal alarm placement. Um, do you just need help installing, um, a smoke alarm? Maybe you don't have the twenty dollars, um, sitting in your penny jar at home right now to buy a smoke alarm and you don't have one. Don't let that be a deterrent. Fire department can provide one for you. Um, things like home safety surveys, looking for life safety issues in the home. Um, help with exit drills and home planning and answers to any other questions related to home safety and fire safety. Um, the fire department really want to highlight that, um, they're here to help, um, prevention is key. Um, they receive many donations, um, from the, some from Camden Rotary and private citizens to help, um, um, pay for some smoke detectors for people that can't afford them. Um, if you feel like you want to help donate, you can contact the fire department as well. Um, so again, um, the fire departments are here to help with, um, fire prevention and safety and don't hesitate to reach out. They want to make sure that everyone knows that they're working together to, um, go out of their way to make sure people have what they need in their homes. And, um, I'm more of a personal note, um, for the fire here in Camden, um, that affected the Headstones and the Connors on February twenty fifth. I know we were all shocked and and grieved with the families and, um, um, and want the absolute best for them. And, um, I think that one thing that came out of that, after we all learned about that fire on the twenty fifth was, um, that was encouraging, was the incredible outpouring of community support to help that family. Um, it's a reminder of how great this community is at banding together when times get tough.
Yeah.
Um, when some of us face tragedy, um, and it reminded me why I'm so proud to live here. Um, so I want to thank everybody for what you did, um, to help that family.
Very appropriate.
Very difficult.
Thank you very much. Very appropriate. Um, anything else, Taylor?
No, that's it.
Jenna?
I'm all set. I just want to say I'm a little, little choked up, but I, Taylor, thank you for saying that. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I've experienced it myself in a different kind of, of familial loss and I just want to echo that this is a really special, special community. Um, and thank you for highlighting that. It needs to be said, even though I think we all recognize it every day.
Right. Marco, you had your finger up there.
Uh, one, one extra thing regarding the fire department, uh, I met with Chief Farley today to look at a sample that was being delivered to Friendship of a mini pumper truck. Um, that's a smaller truck built on almost a five fifty Ford chassis, which is almost like a big pickup. And it's something that's all-wheel drive and I believe it's in the budget that we'll be considering coming up in the, in the budget thing. And it's a great vehicle for being able to reach harder, harder to reach places. Um, something that really looks great for the department. So I'm very much in favor of that when it comes up for budget.
Right. All right. Thanks, Mark. Um, uh, I'm gonna defer Mark's promise about the solar farm to next time because I have a couple of questions that I need to answer. The answer Mark question that was Mark question, uh, we'll, we'll address that the twenty third. It's not urgent tonight. So with that, I'd like to, um, give a little yo-yo here to, uh, to, uh, adjourn as select board and, and, and go into as, uh, waste, act as wastewater commissioners.
So.
Somebody say something.
Second.
Okay, second, motion made, seconded, discussion done. We'll call Allison. Yes, uh, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes, I.
Hi, Mark.
Aye.
And Bob, I also, five zero, fine. We have us wastewater commissioners, one item to approve of our quarterly billings and certificate of commitment of sewer bills for, uh, October, if you can get the right date there, because I don't have my.
October nineteenth.
Thank you. October nineteenth to January twenty twenty one in the amount of two ninety-eight, one fifty-eight, eighty.
I'll make a motion that we approve the quarterly billings and certificate of commitment of sewer bills for October nineteenth, twenty twenty to January twentieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Second.
Roll, Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
I don't think I want to refresh our course on why we do this retro. I, I know I say, but I, once, at some point, I really do, um, it just feels so empty and odd since I, I've already paid this as a wastewater customer myself, um, but I approve. Also, I.
I, um, I'm trying to recall that, Mark.
Aye.
And Taylor, I go on you. Um, Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, I also, and I agree with Allison. It's kind of.
Yeah, me too.
With, uh, with that, I'd like to adjourn as wastewater commissioners and reconvene as select board.
So moved.
So moved and seconded.
Second.
Uh, Taylor?
Uh, I move that we move into executive session.
Uh, we, you don't have to move that.
Okay.
Yeah, you do.
Well, we have to go back to the select board first.
Get the vote on the select board first.
Right, right. We have a motion to move from wastewater commissioners to select board again.
Sorry, Bob.
No problem, no problem. Roll call. It's confusing. Jenna?
Aye.
But Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob, I also, and as a select board, I'd like to, um, leave the select board, uh, uh, in, in, um, and, uh, and enter into executive session at eight forty-seven P M. So with that, we should stop our YouTube, Allison.
Hold on. Aren't we gonna vote on that?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely do.
I think we need to and we need to say what it's pursuant to.
We do, yes. Let's make a motion to, um, um, leave select board and, and enter executive session.
Um, I'll make a motion that, uh, go into executive session from the select board pursuant to M R S A four oh five, uh, parentheses, six, parentheses, E, legal rights and duties.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob, I also, thank you. Uh, Allison, if you do your.
Give me a second. I'll let you know when it's, um, there are two steps here. The first is ending the live stream.
No, that's fine.
And then it's also to let people know, so, um, I'm gonna need to lock the webinar, so for anybody that is, is watching as an attendee, they can either, um, sign off themselves or, or we will, um, sign you off ourselves, um, in just a moment here, um.
If you want to take care of the YouTube, I can take care of the.